They drained a lot of it, but you know. Man, you get, you fix them babies.
Yeah, we need to throw weapons away.
Hold on, you think we're, we're in a pledge? Pledge leaving.
To the light of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
To your invocation, most gracious heaven and father, we thank you for another time, another chance to come to this board meeting so we can all work together and look to you for any and all things and make good decisions and help this town prosper. In your precious name, I pray that you touch each person here and follow them to and from here on the way back home and just watch over everybody. In your precious name, chief. Amen. Rocco, I guess.
Mayor Collins. Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Commissioner Hick.
Here.
Of course, everybody got a change. I noticed you read the minutes. You get a chance to read the minutes?
Okay.
I hear motion to accept the minutes for this January meeting.
Yes, I do.
I'll say.
Rocco.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
Commissioner Hick.
Yes.
Okay, next we have reports from the boards. Anybody? Get anything? Mr. Tally? By my little. Did you remember?
No, nothing beyond, I mean, got some of the side grant stuff. I'm gonna talk, talk to you up there in the regular meeting. Beyond that. Thank you, good.
I think it seemed to email for junk. If you do a desperate extension, huh?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I was wanting to explain all that. Beyond that, uh.
Did you get anything you want to report on, or?
No, I mean, what I was going to do is down there in the business part, so.
Oh, Lord. You can get, oh, yeah, some of the, the, what we're trying to set up courts. They've been in contact with everybody. Everything's looking good. There's just some questions popping up, so. I'm thinking I'm probably just gonna try to set up a meeting with John, ask you, and ask him to come back over, and judge, and city attorney, sheriff, and everybody that's involved in it. It looks like it's not that, that everything should be easy. Eric said we don't have to do any, you know, the sheriff's contract should cover everything, but they're just wanting to make sure and there's some questions that popped up that, you know, I've never done this, so. Then we just work it and get through it. But I was hoping we'd have everything where we could, you know, sign the contract, but we went ahead and done the, paid them for this next quarter, sir. Whatever we do, it'll be July regardless. If we start anew and we're still doing from, if we done one today, we, still July, we'd go it just to get, keep it on track. That works pretty good.
On the?
On the contract.
Okay.
Yeah, because we thought about, now, if we get it done, we'd rather go ahead and do it now.
We'll have to have it updated if they're gonna, if we're gonna process.
Right, and, and what we're saying is just money-wise, 'cause.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
They hadn't had a raise on that thing since eighty-seven. And I said, you put that clause back in there and help yourself. I, I just told him, told him the number thirty thousand. We'd pay, what, twenty-four thousand a year now? So, and he was like, that, he was fine, you know. I did, I think he was surprised at that, but, but they use that, that money goes straight to a car. And they buy usually a car from between the Copper Hill and City every year. And that's probably about, I'd say a quick car, easy sixty thousand.
Yeah, that was.
So, but that's, that's sort of what we're thinking in the, get all that done. But, and if we do, we can still do it. There won't, there won't be no increase in pay this year. We'll start it in July if I was raising the money. 'Cause I told him, got the thing, I think, called the sheriff, and we didn't know what that do to budgets, 'cause everybody's July. So we figured it'd just be better to wait till then, start it.
So we'll have to wait till July to get to start?
No, no. If you, if we can do the agreement next week or whatever, then we can start it from then. But when we raise, we do the increase in the pay, it'll be July.
July.
Which.
So they're gonna do the meeting like everybody, one-time meeting, like where everybody's on the same page?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do, yeah. And should be able to. They've just some questions like popped up, what happens? Say you come to court, or we're getting you there for an, it's a civil matter, and you don't show up. You know, most time, they'll take you to jail. And we don't know exactly sure how that's gonna work. And then it can be moved. If somebody wants to appeal, I think it goes, they can go to the circuit court. Not sure how that is, but it costs you seven hundred and fifty bucks just to go to a circuit court. So most people, they probably clean their place up cheaper than that. So we're, you know, it's just little things, 'cause we've never done this. Nobody has. And if we just go on, I think Copper Hill, they're wanting to do it, but I hadn't talked to them. I don't know if they're just, like, everything, follow our lead. If it works out, they'll just say, okay, fix this up to them. We'll, we'll hang in there. 'Cause I think they trying to get away from court. But as always, Paul Candy, we're probably the first, the first in the state for something else. I was the first in the state to ever sue myself, too. Courtney Brooks. Old Brooks. But other than that.
Lost on that one.
Oh, I'll take back that one.
What can I ask?
That's when you get another round. And then here's something else, and man, we talked about it, but anyway, just to hit a little bit. We, we applied in April of two twenty-two, James did, to get our septic permit for the garage. The company approved it. We, but we never received anything on it, did we? So anyway, I finally got a hold of somebody, they, they're gonna send us copies of it. And luckily, it was good for three years, so. If I can get it, get the septic in before April, then we're good. Yeah, so, but that was crazy. And one of the girl that got a call was wanting to talk to her about it before, but, yeah, it, it sort of, it said it's, it got sidetracked. But I got thinking about it. I thought, well, if, if they sent an email, James, like me, gets so much. If it went to junk, it might've got passed through, but they told me it never, they never, they changed it in the system somehow, but it never even got sent to him. So it wasn't lost in his junk, it just didn't, they just didn't see it. So when I call them, probably tomorrow, I'm gonna have them send it to me, you, you, and you. Surely one of us will get it. That's what we're hoping, so. But other than that. Talk about this deal here when we get there, all that stuff, don't we? Oh, so no old business, that we think of. New business. We got this, just park updates. And I think Courtney texted a little bit, I guess over the weekend. I don't even remember. But anyway, but she got some ideas and some questions about the park, so.
Well, I think, you know, we wanna look for the, uh, grants that we could get to possible, do the upgrades and stuff to it and all the extra stuff we wanted to do. Like to maybe do some pickleball courts up there. I would even like to see like a, like an area people can bring their dogs to, part of it, and you know.
Oh, they bring them.
Well, they would have a place where they could bring their dogs. I think, I hate that our people have to go to McCaseville to go to a park when we have one of the prettiest parks in the tri-state area.
Or new, sure.
And, um, so all that will take time to get it all, to get the grants and to get it updated. But I think before the park can even open for the spring, that, every, the whole grounds up there's got to be pulled out. And we gotta do something because there's, there's glass in it, there's, there's a lot. So that's something I don't think that, I don't see how we can get around not doing it.
That's what's.
Yeah, inside the playground.
And we've replaced that. Now, the boys said it came, they had it in bags. So it's not that hard to spread. So we probably just order some more of it. Black's the cheapest, you can get it colored, but I think that's why we went with black.
No, it's the same price.
Is it now?
Maybe, yes, it's.
So then we might try a new color.
We're talking a little more about it.
Yeah, something to show up and something another. But, yeah, it's weird that she called and said something about pickleball, 'cause I see people doing that in Cleveland, Murphy and everywhere. And they were tennis court. I can't remember, I think a couple of guys, man, the service used it right after we done it. And it's sat there, and there's not a lot of people play Tennessee anymore. But from what I, and I was worried that she'd mention that, 'cause I'd pulled the measurements and all that stuff. And I'm thinking we can probably get at least four courts in that.
Probably.
Maybe more, you know, I'm.
Yeah, and there's people that drive. Murphy and Howlsey to play. And again, we got it, why not?
I mean, it's, it's the new hotness right now.
And it would, it would be huge, because right now, that's, I just sort of sits there.
When they, they have a pickleball court around that looks like that, you know, with that view.
With that view.
And it can get more people up there to the park. And maybe if we have more people and more families up there, it might cut down on some of the, you know, the riffraff coming in and, you know, the damage going to the park.
Yes, really, all we'd have to do is just be a restrap.
Restrap it and net.
Some new nets, mhm.
So you're not really talking about that much?
No, I'm gonna have to look at the nets.
The fencing's gotta have some repairs, too.
Well, we know that, need to measure it. And I, the guy in Cleveland, willing, we, he'd send him stuff once, but some word got sidetracked in it. So I just need to measure that again and have him fix it, straighten that goal up. It is weird that.
You know, maybe even have like a, you know, if we could advertise that we're gonna have a cleanup day at the park. There might be people to come out and help, you know.
And it's, it is, it's good. That's what I was telling the board, just, man, you just, 'cause when they're driving through, just riding around, there's no reason not to open that gate and walk out there. 'Cause what really got a lot of this started, I mean, Courtney's like me, she's got kids, so she lacks the park. But she went up there and they slid back when it was snowing. Some of the men's bathroom had left open. Somebody was living, basically had a little bed set up in there and.
Had extension cord there to the outside.
Extension cord in there trying to cook and. Oh, yeah, and then left it nice.
There was no water?
No water, but they'd been using.
The bathrooms had been used for who knows how long.
But the guys got that cleaned up yesterday. We're trying to turn the water on. And apparently, we gotta buy a whole new pressure reduction for another, the backflow, all that stuff. 'Cause they couldn't tap it, it's made weird. I think, did you get to order that today? Or did Keith come by?
No, he told me.
No, it's a whole.
No, it's the whole thing.
It's a, yeah, it's a, they have to have it, monitor the, the pressure and all that stuff.
He told me when he clocked in.
That's about a metaphor.
He'd bring it, but I never did see him.
That contraption up there.
Yes, metaphor.
And it's, but it controls everything. And it's on our side, of course. And like what the board said, if it bent on something, they'd replace it. But the price over at Travis' was five hundred and twenty-one dollars for that little bill. So I said, mm, get the check, and found it for what? Two, thirty-something, two sixty?
Two, two-something, but.
Cheap, and that's, and same thing, so hopefully they can order it. We're not, that's why there's no water on that. They'd carried water from the housing or wherever they could get it to go, well, they had to from the housing, because the pipe up here froze during the cold, so. And get it fixed, yeah.
And then the next thing up there would be the cameras, where we can keep it nice and, you know, where we can keep a watch on it. Those, I don't think are.
And we updated those things, but it's.
They should be.
They go for a look.
No, they know.
The one in the pavilion.
Just tried.
It works, but even on a sunny day, when I pulled up, it looked, it was dark. You couldn't, you couldn't see nobody. So probably there's, those are the other cameras. And we may have to, we may have to look at somebody other than ETC or something. There's, I mean, they've some good cameras, pretty cheap now for what you need. But we've got space for six or eight.
For a, and.
I know the one on the, at the park, the little kid's park, it sort of turned, it, it looked down on the park like it should, but the pavilion, it's where we have our biggest problems. And I've cut the power off to all the outlets, so nobody can go up there and lug up their phones and do what they've been doing. So that'll stop that a little bit, but, yeah. About now, you can't even see. I really couldn't, I could've seen who was in there. It was, it was dark.
It's just, I don't know where they go.
I don't, it's just dark.
It wasn't like that.
No, we used to see good, but, but it's just weird, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't even see clear on them, pulling them up here. It's not showing any, or the main computer here. And, but like I was telling Courtney through Public Enemy Partners, they've got a grant if we want to update our security system. Not just at the park. We could have it at the park, have the main thing here and the.
At the garage.
At the garage. It could tie in all of them through that grant. If that's something I want to.
Well, I mean, grant's great, but, but that's still no-brainer if we don't. We got, we got a lot, we're ready, we're blasting.
All the security equipment.
It's sad you didn't do that. Then we could keep up the boys, can't we? Which I.
Yeah, well, we definitely did.
We talked about that, too.
Cameras and, and I'm all for whatever we put in the park and add some distance stuff.
We get it watching, and then there's four of them now. And there's no excuse for not to have that park looking prime all the time.
Yeah, that's the other thing. Well, that's what I was gonna say a minute ago, the, how long would the gentleman been in the bathroom up there? And if they were going through, they'd probably seen it.
Yeah, but don't know, 'cause she hadn't been up there. 'Cause I hadn't been up there.
And you could tell someone had tried to pry open the women's, too. But I don't know how they got in the men's unless, you know.
The men's was left unlocked.
My little girl went in, she's like, Daddy, I'm not using that. We were sledding, too, she's like, and I was like, just go, it's okay. She's like, no, and I looked at her, I was like, okay.
Who opens and closes the park?
We've got to figure that out. We've had it, and I done it for a while. And Westy, when he lived here, he done it. Then, God, I don't blame Cheryl, that, I mean, it's sort of, but we. Cheryl had been scheduled to do it, but she liked the rest of us kids and grandkids. So much going on, I don't know, but I think it's not that big a deal. The biggest time closes nine o'clock in summertime, you know, that's, that's good, but.
I'd say August, September, probably, since I've been noticing somebody up there.
Well, you know, and I don't know if our homeless come through. And, and I can't really blame them, 'cause if I was homeless, hey, I'm gonna stay wherever I can to somebody tells me to leave.
Absolutely.
We, we got their stuff, but.
I know Rod's had some problems, too, up there. He is, he had told me about that.
At the park, so, yeah, where the, yeah, even though you're there. Yeah, 'cause when, what's the name, Collins, live back there? That they have, Andre, he can see, he watched the park. I mean, he didn't care a bit to go out there if somebody getting crazy, but, yeah. That's sort of where I miss her running, but. 'Cause, son, you, you get two crazy lads, son, she'd go up there. She'd be calling the mayor, the police, somebody, so, yeah.
Well, I'll help. You know, the past week, somebody's been staying in the post office over here and coming out. And they'll come right behind the post office and this, so I watch when I come in early in the morning. And this morning, there was a guy sleeping in the parking lot.
Well, I told him when I pulled up, I was the first one here, but I didn't get out because there was a guy leaned up against the fence and I didn't get out by myself. But, so, I think it's, but again, that, that goes with our security. You know, feels like we need to be able to see.
We need it, we don't need that craziness up there. We've had it come and go, but it was bad for a while. Then we got the better cameras and started to turn the power off, 'cause I remember looking at the cameras once, and they were like, I don't know how he said politically correct, but undesirables up there. And they would have five or six cell phones laying on those tables plugged up. So they were doing.
Something.
Yeah, they weren't texting each other. They were, they were doing some bad stuff. And we, I think they may have arrested a few, thirty years up there just for that crazy. But, but we need to get something updated and where the depth, they change so often. Even, you know, we gotta set up so they can, and we talked about getting them a monitor over there, too, just where they could see it all back.
Is that something we can have in the contract?
It, it doesn't matter, we can do it, yeah. I mean, what we liked about that deal there, if, I would, if I was a policeman, I could look it up and see what it was going into before I got there. Because you don't.
You have that phone, yeah.
You don't know what's going on. But, yeah, your little park, if we can just keep the trees down. Merlin didn't mind, he said, cut whatever you want to. I don't think it's gonna be that way right now. But, but that's all right, still gotta root a few. But get the fence, and I think maybe the guys can, they can pull that, it bent the doggone basketball go lower, just a little bit, not much, but enough that it's aggravating.
What, when what?
When a tree fell, we had one of those trees planted up to the apartment. I don't know, it wasn't a Bartlett pear, I forgot what it was. And I wouldn't have thought it'd done that, but it took that whole fence down and hit the basketball go and bent the pole. I mean, it pushed it down. I can bet donkey, now. But anyway, it's just little stuff. And I know there for a while, there's supposed to be people standing up in the gazebo, too. It'd be neat if we could put a camera right there, because I don't think it shows anywhere.
It just shows the outside of it on that one, if you get the angle just right. But the angle's off a bit now. Used to, you could see the scraps.
I hate that that's where we're going, that's where this whole country is, a counter.
I know.
You know, but, these people take care of it. It's you the one or two that ruins it for everybody, but same thing. We'll get it figured out. But, yeah, get measurements, whatever. I'll look, see if we can find the price rooms, the netting, and you can do if you want to, whatever you wanna, whatever you wanna do, see. But it, I think that, that had crossed my mind just from being down around Cleveland. I know a lot of guys that do that. I sidetracked, forgot about it, but I've still got, I've got the rules and measurements and all that stuff. I think you might have.
So with the fence, can we go ahead and, you said we're gonna check on insurance with it? Is that something we could go ahead and get going?
No, insurance is done. Didn't they done? But didn't we already file that on insurance? When you got the measure?
It was the other fence.
Okay, okay, yeah, but.
We, we just need Colin to get him to fix it.
Yeah, and he will do us right. He may actually have some fencing, but that's what. It's sixteen feet, no, it's, it's taller than that, it's sixteen or eighteen foot tall.
It has fair amount of height, so, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause basketball goes ten foot, and it don't hook.
Yeah, the fence is tall.
I'd say probably sixteen foot, I hadn't measured the length, but, but, yeah. But it, it is, and, I don't know, we might, we sealed that whenever we redone it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, what you need, if you just need to reseal it and.
The whole basketball.
Yeah.
See, and I don't think all that would be too much. I think it would be, you know, I think we, I'll get pricing on all that.
We do gotta fill the others out.
Really, but it's two thousand and seven when we started it.
Tailed up pretty good.
It has, but, and it's been, I mean, for the most part, everybody's liking it. I think we run it pretty regular when it's going.
Yeah, when it's gone.
It's just, so, but, yeah, that's, and I'm fine with that, and I can, I think they got Development District coming up. I'll run it by Chuck now and see what they've got up there, too. 'Cause I know they, T-Dade's probably the place up in there that you get your grant for playground.
The parks grants fixing to come up. They have ties for it.
'Cause I'm thinking we paid ten thousand dollars for that little playground equipment there and now. I don't know what it would cost me.
More than that.
No, remember, Eric got us, we get the ten thousand dollar grant. Boy, that was just for the playground equipment, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was twenty-five thousand, what that playground cost.
But either way, yeah, that's twenty, well, yeah.
But we'll go ahead and do the, um, under the swings and like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can, we can do that. I wish, the way they wouldn't kick it all out, but.
I think that's just gonna.
Yeah.
Well, if we can get the grant, there's lots of things. Have you seen like the one over McCaseville? It's like the hard service. Like, I mean, it's.
Cushion.
Yeah, that would be really nice, and you don't have to worry about them kicking it out and.
It's a lot easier.
Taking it with them.
With under the swing, that's solid rock. So, yeah, that cushion, we'd put pads on it, but I don't reckon we've been blessed if they get hurt on the swing. Or if they have, they didn't say nothing.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if I speak real quick. No, I'll tell you, first, if you'll just let us know when you're gonna do it, we can put the word out, maybe get some volunteers to come over and help. And I'll tell you, it's probably one of the newest residents of Duck Town now. I'm excited about it.
Can you move to town?
Yeah, and the actions, and part of my decision, the actions of, of coming in and actually setting up a court process here. One of the problems we run into in this side of the county is people that aren't maintaining their property. It's such a, it's not only a public nuisance, but it's a threat. It's so easy to get hurt at those kind of fires. So I appreciate what all of y'all are doing to clean things up. It protects us. And, uh, so, you know, with that, and, and one of the things, I'll tell you, we had a group that we're actually talking about driving to Murphy three times a week just to go play pickleball.
Okay.
That's a big, a big difference in driving. Murphy is packed every weekend.
Murphy is, and I guess Blair's will probably head, you said, Howlsey?
Fannin's got a, a huge indoor thing going on. So, uh, we've been talking to the volunteer fire departments. We're too old to challenge each other to volleyball anymore, but I could see us challenging each other to pickleball contests out there, so. I appreciate that. But we'd be happy to get some volunteers together if y'all just let us know.
Okay.
Great.
It'd be good, actually, that's the good thing about having somebody younger. I mean, when we done all this, we were young and all excited, and I'm glad you. 'Cause I mean, really, working and stuff, it's hard to keep going. But in the meantime, if we manage to do that, if we can improve it, that'll be better. And we can get this court stuff, that'd be, be awesome. And I said, the good thing about my house now, people come by, I don't care if I stand out there, nobody waves at me no more, 'cause they're looking across the road. And it's bad, you know? James don't even wave at me now. What the heck? But it's, and I, I don't, I don't understand it, but, but we're, and then, I think two or three, we can, we can get things set up, take care of a couple. I think it'll change a lot of the other stuff. Yeah, gonna have to do something.
The other thing that I wanted to, uh, throw at you guys, Cheryl and I had talked about starting a new Facebook page, just so we could get things out to people and, you know, that's a great thing, you know, put on there, hey, we're scheduling the park day. You know, people might come. If they don't, we're not out anything, we're not losing anything, but like she said, it's another publication, you know, to let people know what's going on. Um, you know, we got the Easter egg hunt.
Might at homecoming?
Mm-hmm.
Always something. And we had it, but we, we hadn't utilized it a long time, haven't we?
Yeah, and she.
We need it somehow, whatever. We do set it up so everybody has a password and we have a.
She knows how to do it and to get, to get it set up, so we're going to work together.
And we can set it where we can both be on it and use it and.
All of it. In order for, well, Steph would probably be more at it than I would, but the same difference, yeah, having to get it fixed where we can all, but yeah, we need.
Well, once it's set up, everybody can load stuff on it.
Right.
Yeah.
But just, I think it, it'll help, you know? Yeah, and there's way, you know, we've had that, but we hadn't done nothing.
Yeah.
Really, it's, I don't even know who we got last time.
Cleveland, somewhere out of Cleveland.
Somewhere, but it'd be neat to have it and get our, get it updated. It's there, but it's hadn't been tested a long time. Cause now putting meat and we used to put manatees on it and all, all that stuff when we first started, I think. That's why we had to wrap stuff down. That's why we need young minds. Can't think of anything. Yeah, anything, but that's, I was telling Courtney also with the guys, I said, man, she's got as much say over them guys as we do. I said, she needs something, sees something.
I got a list. They may not like it, but I've got one started.
I'll do more than, I said, Courtney, don't make it all happy.
Oh, so you've already worn them?
Well, but what we always do.
It's okay, it's okay.
Somewhere, we never had to really jump on nobody when we called, you know, I said, if you can, I need you to do something, and usually they do good, but. We've got one or two, if you really, like one for sure, if you jump on them hard, oh, God, you think the world in yourself. You have to handle them deadly quickly. But they'll do it.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, well, I mean, I've always done more. Somebody asks me, hold up rather than cuss me and tell me what to do, so. But they, they do pretty good. Keep them, but any time you see something out. We've got their numbers, but yes, yes. Yeah, tell them or whatever. Of course, we done talked a little bit about the court stuff and, and the biggest thing too, I think, was the fines. We've got those, we'll have to get those set up. And there'll be some other things in our code that, that sure, I told him when he thought of something, that, that I've never done all this stuff. Or any other thing, the same thing, at least text me or something so we can write it down and, and work it, 'cause I don't know, probably she's the one taking care of her updates and.
Are you setting up the meeting to get everybody all together, or who's, who's setting that up?
Uh, I, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, I did one time when we, we all, when we first started it, but we thought, and everybody was looking good, but just, just for little questions, like I said. I don't know if somebody don't show up. Well, I haven't been, you know? And then the fines, I think our fines, they've been sit, they look cheap when you look in the book, but I'm thinking the way Eric talks, it may look like twenty-five dollars, but when you add that up, a damn. It starts standing up, so, yeah. But anyway, just a little stuff like that and, and we, we need to start doing our workshop, start trying to get that finished up anyway, don't we? 'Cause right now, when I give them a copy of what we got, it's just all over the place till we get it.
Yeah, she's supposed to be working on it, but.
But we've added quite a few since we've done this thing in, it's two thousand seven.
Yeah, matter of fact, probably next evening, I've got the title where she redid it. Uh, but the rest of it, 'cause I'd asked her for a timeline, she said, I first year, they should be working on it, so.
And they've got a lot. They're not, they, they don't, not just Duck Town asking them to do stuff, but they do good for us. Honestly, if they didn't, it would for them, Development District, oh, what we do. We'd make it, but other than that, of course, another thing, we, they've already done it, I reckon, but. I guess you've seen this, this was on the, for the handrail? Did they get it?
Yeah, no, that's why, uh, I wanna come, make sure to thank y'all, you know, for, for getting that put up, you know, the nice. Yeah, it looks great, you know?
And nobody, I didn't ever think a thing about that. Then when I was up there at Christmas walking, I'm like, man, they had railed it places. I thought, wow. But yeah, you come out here, door home.
You know, and last week, I almost had another lady.
Really?
I mean, in broad daylight, walked straight off that thing, you know?
So, but they got it fixed now, so that shouldn't happen.
Yeah, no, it looked up to you, but, but no, it looks real good, and not only did they put that out, they actually put it, like a, a little, like diagonal piece up, you know, for the stairs, and so that was. You know, they went ahead and did some extra, you know, so that was awesome. But yeah, no, I wanted to thank y'all for, for getting that done for us.
It took a little bit, but luckily it's burying them over here.
Yeah.
Justin Evans, well, your husband works there wearing that on.
He does?
But anyway, yeah, Barry, Barry does something, he does it right, so they call him when he went up to measure it. Yeah, and get the price done and we get it under a thing. We don't have to vote on it unless you just, do we need to just to make it?
Yeah, we need to go ahead.
Okay, so.
Finalize it.
Yeah, everything with ours, and they, they put it in, done all the stuff, it's thirty-four fifty. So, I hear most of it, I haven't done, got it set up, now we gotta pay them.
Well, that's, that's the reason I said we need to vote on it.
Yeah, just go ahead and make sure, but, but it was, it was under our, under our standards, so still, we just wanna talk about it. All right, to the second, roll call.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Hook.
Yes.
And if I can get two signatures on the check, please.
You don't.
Don't matter.
We let you get rid of the crap, how about that? Yeah, welcome. But you do that at work all day too.
Sorry, say I sign on the other end.
Try to sign after a while, but that'll work.
You want me to take the check?
You wanna send it to me or you want her to take it to him?
Either way, doesn't matter.
No, that'll.
I'll go by there tomorrow.
I'll go by there tomorrow.
Put it in the envelope, jump.
I will, 'cause I've gotta give them this. Thanks.
If they don't get their check, they'll take it out of hubby's mice. But no, I'm, I'm glad they're there and they're, they're, they're needing more property for what Justin and Lisa got, they could, need to expand, and that, that thing is taken off. Only, I said, if you need about twenty acres out somewhere, you should, they were, they were glad to get that, but they've already outgrew it, looks like, I mean, it's crazy, so. And them four, how many now?
Oh, I don't know, and they, they fixing to grow.
Well, they did, I mean.
They fixing to add a bunch of more stuff.
I'm glad they're.
I turned this thing off.
Boogie nose. But other than that, I see, it was the seventeenth we.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I want more, talk about the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the flood, see, you wrote that, I said, hey, go for it.
So, anyway, the SAW grant, the, you know, as we know, we worked through it anyway, we had six that we awarded. Uh, four of them is completed so far. Uh, the fifth one is just completed, which was the brewery, they finished theirs out. They just got me their paperwork and stuff. Uh, the situation we're in is that the contract with the state, like February the eighth, sixth or eighth. Is the drop dead date on it, so we got everything turned into that. Uh, Laura's place, I've prodded them a couple of different times. Uh, the last was at the first of the year, uh, like the first week of the year. Told them that I needed everything completed by the end of the month, 'cause we had need to turn it in, get everything pre-approved, 'cause basically, that's the largest one of it. Uh, we, that's, I think it's right at nineteen, twenty thousand dollars on that part. And it kind of, if you don't know what I mean, basically, it's a SAW grant, the state pays seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, uh, so anyway, he sent me an email back that he's working on, was gonna try to get it by the end of the month. He's got about a quarter of the roof on it, uh, and none of the siding. So, uh, I went ahead and asked Jordan, or Jonathan, excuse me, to see if we could get a thirty day extension, uh, on the contract. And I'm working through to get the brewery stuff finalized, so it'll be completed, we'll get it in time. Basically, the state's gotta approve everything and say, yeah, we're good with the paperwork you got and everything before we write the check and reimburse them.
So, we can get, so we get reimbursed.
Right, so we get reimbursed, 'cause if we don't, we write them a check and the state says, no, we're not good with it, then we're left on the back.
We just paid for it.
So, especially with that twenty thousand dollar one, there's no way we could do that. Uh, so.
And I don't think they wants to do that.
Yeah, but basically, I understand they had a, but I mean, we're two years into this, and, you know, I wish they'd finished a little quicker, but I understand.
I know they ran into some problems too with the building and some.
Yeah.
Old stuff that was there that had to be removed, certainly.
Yeah, and, but at the same time, then they're doing most of it on the weekend by themselves.
Right.
And I understand that.
And I think it's dead best where you had to take.
But anyway, I just wanna kinda let you know, uh, I did get them going to do that. If you're okay with it, I'll go ahead and they'll send it, of course, you have to sign it. Uh, get the extension on it or whatever, and then once they, hopefully, I'm gonna send them, once we figure out if we're gonna do that, I'm gonna.
Is that something that they do sometimes?
I'm gonna send them, I'm gonna send them an email basically as the drop dead. You know, 'cause I mean, what it does, we ask for extensions with the grants and stuff or whatever, when we reapply the next time, that sort of looks bad on us.
Right.
Uh, or if we don't complete what we said we're going to. Uh, so, which I think they will, but, but anyway, that's sort of what we're at on it. But, uh, the email that Jonathan, or the state sent back anyway, said, yeah, it shouldn't be a problem or whatever, we'll go ahead and get you a cop, get a copy of signature.
We put your request for an extension into the legal department, you should be getting a new contract amended, amendment to be signed, so hopefully.
Right.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Right. But that's usually about thirty days is about all they'll give you on it?
Yeah, and, well, I've even told them, they need help, I mean, I'll go up there and help them or, if the guys, if that's what it takes to get it done, so we can get their money back.
They get, they get their money back.
Yeah.
I mean, so, they need to, they need to finish.
That's true, we had, we had paid them yet ever.
I agree, if you have to hire somebody for one weekend or during the week, finish it up, 'cause all they gotta do is get the sign on it, get the roof on it. And I think it's, you know, with the tramp, everything else is pretty much done. Uh, and then get stuff to us. I mean, it'll take, it'll take a little while to get all theirs, to get the receipts and get all that stuff together, so that's gonna be a, a booger. Uh, but that's okay, we'll get it, but, but anyway, we, like I said, we've got thirty days, so that'd put us into first week of March sometime.
And hopefully weather, hopefully not the best time weather-wise trying to do outside work right now.
But, all right, so, the second part of this, all right, as part of that grant too, also, uh, you were talking about the little park next to Rod's, Frenchy Park there. Uh, all right, so, when we pay the brewery their amount, and then we pay Crawford's theirs, there's about eight, eighty-five hundred dollars that's left in that grant money. Uh, as part of it initially, we put in was to try to refurbish and do some landscaping and stuff for Frenchy Park. We knew we were gonna do that. So, that was initial part of it, and the state's approved us to do that. Uh, also, we can use, uh, up to thirty-five hundred dollars to pay the admin cost for the Development District out of it. So, that's the plan, is to pay that thirty-five hundred dollars out, so that leaves us five thousand dollars that we can put into the park.
Right, so, that should be plenty.
Yeah, well, I looked today, there's a, uh, you was talking about mulch. Uh, I met with Rod and talked to him, so there's a couple of planters. That were original, that were plastic, poly, poly, they're, they're rotted and this and that, and they got some trees in them that have outgrown them. Uh, so, my thoughts is, if y'all okay with it, we'll get the mulch. Mulch, the, that you can get the cubed or the, basically, the chunks. Uh, you can get those, or you can get it shredded. The shredded's a little bit more, but I think it looks a whole lot better. Uh, enough mulch to do it, probably Home Depot, you can, I can order it with it, is about, uh, it's what's fourteen hundred and. Fourteen hundred and fifty square foot or about three hundred and sixty cubic foot that we need, so it's gonna be about around four thousand dollars for mulch. To, to do two to three inches and all that. There'll probably be a little bit extra, but it's adding ten percent, I think. Uh, that, a couple of little planters, so we can spend up to basically about sixty-five, sixty-six hundred dollars, and then we can reimburse for five thousand of it. Uh, to put up there, so if y'all okay with it, I'll go ahead. I know we'd already talked about that before you got here, we, that's sort of the plan. But if y'all are good with it, then I'll go ahead and order the stuff from Home Depot and, uh, get that and get a couple of planters and stuff, and then, but I, it'll not exceed the sixty-five hundred dollars, whatever. Probably more closer to five, but I mean, I'd like to get, if state's paying for seventy-five percent of it, get as much as we can.
I'm good with that.
All right.
Yeah, I forgot about that part though.
Yeah.
It, it time, it needs some.
Yeah.
It's been in pretty good shape, but it, it could use some, some work.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking get the mulch, and I'm gonna go and get some wheat barrier, uh, wheat block to put under it. And then that, and then, like I said, a couple of planters, and Rod, Rod said if we buy them planters, he, he's actually those, uh, silver maples that have grown up, took up too big for the planters. He could work with the boys and relocate them somewhere, and then he said he'd buy a couple of nicer ornate trees to put in them and stuff and some plantings.
Sounds good to me.
All right, yeah, 'cause that thing's decent.
Looks busy.
Busy when it's warm.
And he was, he was actually out there later today, he's out there cleaning and getting everything ready for spring.
Yeah.
I wished I had whatever he takes.
Jen's saying, man, he is.
Wild all the time.
All the time.
Yeah.
As of the next day, of course, it'll be, February seventeenth, so you'll all be closed for President's Day. What day will it be? Monday?
Monday.
Yeah, so no trash, it'll all be cute, eh?
Seeing that stuff that can go on the Facebook page.
Yep, and you'd be surprised, yeah, the unit, go around and try to put a little slip out and tell people that. It don't matter.
Yeah, sometimes it gets missed.
But that's not too, that's not a bad thing, closing on Friday, and then you get the whole weekend's trash on Monday. And then, which, scheduled, I have a meeting for five thirty, February eighteenth, if everything works. I haven't really had a whole lot. Planning Commission, they'll probably need to try to have on this, like I said, I, never there's.
Uh, well.
From the A D board or however you say that, won't become, about the courthouse and talk to us, so.
I think Phil Dill will have his stuff ready too.
The what board? I didn't hear that.
Uh, Planning Commission.
No, 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 that would want to come to that.
Oh, that's, that's Development, whatever, I already get it mixed up.
Okay, that's why I got a text today about that, so, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, I think they want to see if I change it's own and owner or something, but either way, but I feel just coming for that board, that's, that's another decision for me, but. Coming for the board, that's basically whatever they do, they refer it to the city, and then the city goes there, so, so we'll just talk to them, see what, what they got to say about it, but Ryan Cook will probably be on it.
Oh, I had one more thing too. Oh, I'm sorry, you want me to go, or you?
No, I, I was just going to tell them that April the nineteenth at eleven AM sounds good for the egg hunt, that'll be the day before Easter, 'cause the weekend before that's prom. And, you know, they been having prom up here, boys, we don't wanna interfere, so, uh, that's what we'll do and.
You said eleven?
Yes.
Okay.
Said eighteen, nineteen?
Nineteen, April the nineteenth, it's on Saturday. That'll be, that'll be good now. Courtney, you've got.
Oh, and I think that we should look into being able to pay with your debit card for like your taxes and stuff, 'cause, you know, I think it, here at City Hall, I think it would. You know, most of the time, you can do a lot of that through the bank. I don't know if it's something we can check on and just, you know?
I don't know how they.
Well, we can check with the bank and, and see if they've got something, you know, to set up the machine, and that way it could go.
The guy that started doing it, but they didn't want to for a long time because of the fees and all that stuff.
That's on your credit card, debit card during the.
The debit, because a lot of people do.
Credit card. You do debit, don't do the credit.
A lot of people do want to pay their city taxes with a debit card, so if we can look into that, and if we could get it through the banks, since that's our bank account, it would just go straight in there automatically.
You'd probably go on one of those small squares.
And, uh, but, uh, well, that's something y'all have to approve. I just can't go check on this stuff still.
Look and see, but I think that's, I think you can, 'cause that's what it does. It's just a little machine, and then basically it puts it into an account.
Well, I know things have changed since I ran a business and had one, you know, things are different, so.
I mean, I can't square off my phone.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Like, I don't even have to, you know, like a little.
Right.
Yeah, just the ducks now from that debit card.
You just make things a lot easier.
I mean, just check into it, it's all we can do, but work.
Yeah.
We can use it. I'm old fashioned, man, I'm cash or nothing.
A lot of people that I never have cash.
They gonna put me in a ground eventually, just like, they just keep bringing myself through there. No credit cards and all that junk, eh?
Yeah.
I might not be able to live as long as my dad and do that, but I'm gonna try. They get me a lot of these little people calling, trying to do something, I'll take a pay, I don't have a credit card or nothing, I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, keep them from tracking you.
In fact, I got a call, they said, by the camp, I was like, what the heck, I don't have nothing, and it was from Rent-A-Center, so I drove to Rent-A-Center. They didn't even have a number. My dad must've hit the wrong number today, trying to get me to talk about something. I'm like, I've never done business with you guys, I don't know, I don't have any account here. But I wanna make sure somebody else didn't have me in account. That's what I like about the technology stuff of it. But on another note here, they're doing their annual banquet for the chamber. I think, have you, did you go with us the first time? But anyway, I told her to hold us a table, and if we're gonna do a table sponsorship for the city of Duck Town, there's eight, it's eight people, and it's like six hundred bucks. And then as for the dinner and all the stuff, and of course, then you got your individual prices there too, but. I didn't wanna tell her to absolutely tell, talk to you guys if you think it's something that you wanna do, and the move, the venue's gonna be over at Old Cold Ridge Camp this year, rather than where we've been going. But I mean, it, it.
Where is Ridge Camp?
Uh, Chris White's place, off of, Cushing Creek.
Can I see?
Take a left, look off that way, yeah. Yeah. But they, they do a lot, they do at the summer camp, a lot of like church coming after, they got a big setup, but.
Yeah, I'm fine if you wanna do it.
I mean, you know, we used to be a member years back, and then we quit it. I don't know if we could do that again or not, but in the meantime, if you wanna do that, I'll let her know, and we just. They, they kept us there just in case, 'cause she's trying to get her number so she'll know what to, to do, and I think the damn deli's doing the food. Last year Rod, I think, catered it, but just, we're doing it, trying to, you know, we try to keep it local, so they're doing, it, it's usually a pretty good time, and the speaker, I think, should be good. So, but if you're good with that, I figured that's. We have six, and if her and Brad wanna come in at eight, or whatever, which I didn't mention about the kid, which his dad's behind, so if you wanna bring your little one or. Wait, Courtney, how many little ones you got with you that night, then you might wanna leave them at the house if you just.
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah, but we set it up for that anyway, and had a, had a hipper chamber.
I think you would need to stay active and stuff like that, and, you know.
They do, yeah. Commission, don't protect the like, but they do, they do good, and I, I always try to help, whatever.
Yeah.
Do that, we'll, we'll do that, help them then go from there, but that'll be, it's a pretty good eating hole for that nap. Is there anything from the crowd? You just let it, we got your hammer up.
Yeah.
Wasn't expecting it in a way, was it?
Yeah, right, I, I wouldn't come to yell at y'all, not, you know, like, I don't know if y'all used to this, I was trying to say thank you.
I didn't see you slipping, man. Awful quiet, what are you doing?
I'm a camera.
Okay. Got anything you need to know or just to show up?
No, we're just observing.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Appreciate you coming.
That's pretty crazy for reading you that, you know, we didn't think nobody'd show up, so.
I'll give you a little update, if you don't mind, real quick, on the fire department, uh, uh, especially with the Brysons having their business up here. You know, last year, we had one person in Duck Town on the volunteer fire department, and now we got four people running out of here, so.
I'll see.
Our numbers have gone up, and, uh, uh, county was able to buy an engine from the city of Cleveland, a really good engine. And, uh, we put it at the Grassy Creek Station. It's a big engine, so it'll only fit in that building, so you'll see a newer engine roll outdoors going by. All of our stations now all have good equipment in it, um, everything's running. Call volume is maintaining about thirteen to fifteen halls a month. We, we just unfortunately had another fatality fire here just a week and a half ago. On, down on Highway sixty-eight, so, uh, I think it may have been on the anniversary of the last fatality fire, so, uh, you know, unfortunately, that's happened. But, uh, you know, and then the same thing, matter of fact, at that fire, we had, uh, total loss. It was fully involved when we got there, coming through the roof when they called it in. But, uh, fifteen degrees outside, hoses freezing to the ground, having to keep the pumps running, the, the connections are all freezing up. And, uh, and unfortunately, at that fire, right near the end of the fire, just about the time you're about to let your guard down, we had a wall collapse and hurt two firefighters. The, one of them, both of them were treated on the scene, one of them is seeking further care, and one of them is, is fine, but, uh, scary event for it, but, uh. So, a lot, one on, a lot of good stuff happening, and, uh, you know, I know next month we'll be coming back looking, see if you guys could donate to us again, it'll be that time of year, but, uh. Uh, just wanted to let you know everything's going well, and we're getting a good turnout, and, uh, staying busy unfortunately.
We try not to hit the sirens till, to the light, you know? Till we get past the light. Did you get your, uh, stuff turned in for that, that grant, for the federal stuff? I think I'd emailed you, and you said y'all are already.
Yep, we got everything. We got the work in that. Uh, we did put in for the Tennessee grant, and surprisingly, um. Yep, we got, we're working that, uh, we did put in for the Tennessee grant, and surprisingly, um, uh, we're finding out, nobody got it, uh, but what we're thinking happened now that we're investigating, I'm not sure, but it looks like, uh, in the past, they've always pretty much spread the money out, but I'm thinking this year, what they've done is they've pushed all the, that ten million dollars to East Tennessee from, uh, the storm damage. There's so much destruction there, they probably moved all the money there, so, uh, we didn't unfortunately get awarded that grant, but we'll keep applying to everything we can get.
Well, anything that, I would say, when you get them, get them turned in and stuff, whatever, not that we're anybody, but we do know a few folks that we can.
We've had, put it in success three years ago.
State, uh, U S. Senator and.
Well, we appreciate it, that's what we're looking for, just somebody that's got a little bit of legislative push sometimes.
Get, get your letter, requisitions, stuff like that, 'cause that counts a lot on those. Yeah, just let us know.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. All lines clear.
George, thank you. I just made. Thank you, everybody.
That's weird.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool, was that Lynn, was Lynn, I love it.
Man, y'all must be bored.